To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next is the approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or changes for tonight? Not as there are motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Councilmember Lutgerin, second by Councilmember Doherty. All in favor?
Aye.
Council staff reports, don't have too much. I have three Zoom meetings. As all of you know, I was appointed to the Energy Transition Advisory Committee through DEED and Secretary of State, so I have three subcommittee Zoom meetings coming up relative to that. And then the next meeting will be held in Becker at the Sherco Power Plant. And then next week is Toasted Topics with the Surrounding Cities and State of the Cities address. Next is Councilmember Doherty.
I have nothing to report.
Councilmember Johnson.
About a week and a half ago, I was appointed by the Governor and Lieutenant Governor to the Board of Water and Soil Resources as the Metro City elected official representative.
Well, congratulations.
Thank you.
Councilmember Lutgerin.
I think I mentioned at our last meeting, but the next Lake Elmo Airport Advisory Meeting is set for Wednesday, May 20, I think it was 3rd, it was the 25th, 25th at 3 o'clock. And then our Planning Commission Meeting for May has been canceled.
Thank you. Councilmember Runk.
I have CVB meeting tomorrow and Watershed meeting on Thursday. And one thing in regard to Watershed is the fact that with her new position, Councilmember Johnson is now overseeing, helping oversee and set policies for the various Watershed. So I guess I'm some way working for her now.
Oh, I did fail to mention too, I did get a call this afternoon from our lobbyists with the Coalition of Utility Cities and a transition aid and the transition grants has made it through and it will go for a House vote or a floor vote. Next is Chief of Police.
Mayor and Council, just two quick things. This Friday at noon is the law enforcement Memorial Day Ceremony. It's going to be held at the historic courthouse. Of course, everyone is invited and we'll have a contingent of Oak Park Police there, of course. And two, just want to say a special thank you to the Stillwater Fire Department. They wrapped up our 40-hour long EMR first responder class last week for us. And they did that free of charge, sending out their instructors, which is pretty awesome.
What time is it? Is it 10 o'clock again?
Noon. Noon on Friday.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Chief, any, a quick question for Chief. Any, any update on how things are going with construction detours? I just happened to see on my way up tonight, accident at Kruger and 58th Street. How are things going there?
Not too bad. That's actually our first accident with the construction season of that particular at 58th and Kruger, which we were concerned about. But we've had approximately six, but spread out from Stillwater Boulevard to Oak Green, different parts and in front of Bow Wells. So we're monitoring each, saying he's keeping track of each location, but nothing concentrated or nothing like, you know, just a lot of, a lot of volume of vehicles. And that's what, everybody's kind of learning their new routes, the detours right now. So far, so good.
Well, no, I was going to comment on the intersection that he's talking about. The other day, I happened to have been coming out from the north to 58th Street on Kruger. And there's no way you're making a left-hand turn out of, out of there because with the traffic, you just can't do it. You made it backed up, was backing up really bad there. I mean, there were, I went by the other day and there were like eight cars on Kruger trying to turn left while.
Yeah, there's some backups that we're seeing and then people are learning new ways.
I ended up, I turned and went out Stillwater Boulevard down to the highway and back around.
Yeah, we've seen some backups, especially at the traffic light intersections that just can't hold that volume of cars. There's some cars getting stuck in the middle of the intersection, not knowing where to go. But otherwise, everybody's kind of picking up new, their new route. Unfortunately, we've got some easy detours. So far, so good.
And we'll just keep an eye on that. We'll assess as.
Yep. Speed trailer is going to go out every weekend. So we'll leave that out for four days, three, four days straight and try to help. We're seeing just a lot of traffic coming off of 36, coming eastbound, making the right turn on Oak Green, and then making the next right on to 58 because Washington or Norrell is blocked. So that's, that's where we're seeing a bigger, a big pickup there. So that's why we put the trailer back out, grabbing those cars going west. Some folks that aren't from the area could display on what their speed is.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you. Assistant City Minister, Trader Pinsky.
Mayor and Council, I have two reports for you this evening. First is the recycling award winner, Paula Sanchez, 14855, 57th Street North, was delighted to find out she had won and she has selected a $25 award for her recycling efforts. My second report for you this evening is spring cleanup, which was Saturday, May 7. We had a beautiful weather day. Tennis sanitation did a fantastic job getting our residents through in a quick and efficient manner. We had 346 loads come in that day. That's pretty on par for what we get in spring. For instance, last year, we had 357. The year before, during the pandemic, was a little higher, 374. So pretty typical for what we see for spring cleanup. Lots of, lots of good stuff coming through. Total tonnage, 44.97 tons. That's a little bit less than the previous year. So that just says the same amount of cars were coming through, but their loads were a little lighter. We did have not the best weather the week ahead for people to clean out their garages, but we had no complaints that day. It was a great day. I thank tennis sanitation and of course, receptionist Mary Seager for working with me that day. It was great.
Did a great job. I drove by there about 8 o'clock and there, there was no line. I mean, they weren't out onto Osgood. So it was moving quick.
We noticed that right away. Last year, I think we had wrapped around out onto Osgood and this year, they didn't even reach Osgood. So that was nice. And that was the only line we had all day was just right in the morning. And then the rest of the day, everybody was just rolling it, rolling in and out.
Well, thank you for being out there on such a lovely day.
Yes.
Next is visitor public comment. This is time for anyone in the audience that would like to address the council on anything that's not on the agenda to come forward for three minutes. Then we'll move on to the consent agenda, which is approved. Bills and investments, check 68059 to 68105 for a total of $269,451.21. Approve city council minutes from April 26, 2022. Approve waiver of statutory tort limits for city liability insurance through League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust for 2022 to 2023.
I'll move the consent agenda as presented.
Second, motion by Councilmember Runk, second by Councilmember Johnson. Eric?
Councilmember Doherty.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Lutgerin.
Yes.
Councilmember Runk.
Yes.
Mayor McHumber.
Yes. Next is public hearings, and we have one tonight, which is to consider an issuance of tobacco sales license to Smoke Shack Minnesota LLC. Jennifer?
Mayor and Council, the city received an application from Smoke Shack MN LLC for tobacco and tobacco product sales at 14375 60th Street North. The application was reviewed, received, background investigation was complete, the investigation fee and license fee have been paid, and the applicants are here today if you have any questions. Staff has no issues with the license.
Thank you. I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone here who would like to address the application for tobacco sales? Not as there are motion to close the public hearing? So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Johnson, second by Councilmember Lutgerin. All in favor?
Aye.
And is there any discussion regarding the application? Not as there are motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Runk, second by Councilmember Doherty. All in favor? Yep, all in favor?
Aye.
So move on to old business, which there is none. And then new business is Stillwater Motors 100-year celebration event in food trucks. Eric?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We have DJ Redunz and his wife Linda, who are the owners of Stillwater Motors and are here to talk to you about their 100-year celebration event. And from our city ordinance, we do have a requirement for a special permit to be issued by the city council for members of food trucks. Obviously, the council has taken a position a few years ago that obviously we want people to visit our, our brick and mortar stores. However, there are special events like this that, that don't accommodate that kind of use. And, and so they made the necessary application. And in reviewing it, all seems like a great event and we don't expect any issues. And our Chief of Police, who also reviewed the proposal, also had no, had no significant concerns at all. Obviously, the events planned for June 9, largely later in the evening at, and about 7 o'clock, they're prepared for heat and other emergency medical services. Their signage plan is adequate and their food vendors are proposed to be licensed by the state. So that's all, all we generally can review for these folks. And that's all we have. And, and they are here to, to add on to that stuff. So.
DJ, do you want to, do you want to tell us about your event? You can come forward too, Linda. Oh, Eric.
Mayor, City Council, thank you for having us. Quite an accomplishment. 100 years as a family-owned business. We're going to do a large outdoor celebration with food, clowns, caricatures, face painters, live music, activities for the young people, the kids. We also have going on currently $100 service Wednesday certificate. Just stop in, anybody out within the city, any of our customers. And then we're also giving away 2022 Chevrolet Trax vehicle, which will be drawn on November 14. So I'm open to any questions anyone may have for me.
I just have one question for Jennifer. Isn't that the night of our party in the park?
Is DJ.
So people will be well-fed in the city, then. They can come to the city and get hot dogs and then go get donuts from you.
I've counted four events on that event.
Okay. Well, let's hope that there's really good weather for all of it.
Thank you.
And the chief will have to watch the traffic on 58th going from our party in the park to, to Stillwater Motors.
Will be.
Well, congratulations on 100 years. That is really spectacular.
Thank you.
Any questions for DJ?
Oh, Mayor, I can make a motion to approve the request.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Runk, second by Councilmember Lutgerin. All in favor?
Aye.
We look forward to it.
Look forward to seeing everybody.
Next, we'll move on to 58th Street Traffic Speed Warning Signal and Parking Area Chief.
Mayor and Council, we've talked about this topic a few times already. We're trying to come up with some traffic calming solutions, maybe to help the speed on 58th Street. Some of those options that came up with those speed display signs. Additionally, another one was talking about maybe a parking pad along with medians or some other brake. That could be a stop sign control at Kruger. I think what you have in front of you here today, we talked with staff and Public Works administrators, and we're looking at those two-speed display signs, I think would be appropriate for 58, catching both directions. And then along with the parking pad, currently, we don't have an effective manner to monitor 58th with the police squad car and do radar in, other than sitting on the pedestrian walking path, which we really don't want to be on there either. So by doing this, allows us a couple of things. It warns the vehicles that are on 58th Street going east and west of their display, on the display sign their speed, along with laws for enforcement actions in a safer manner for us and appropriate as said. I've taken a bunch of looks and started getting estimates. I've narrowed it down to two and then I narrowed it down to one. As far as the speed display signs, Administrator Johnson worked on the parking pad. And that's what we have for you today. Administrator Johnson, was there anything else I missed on that?
I got nothing.
I got nothing.
I just have a question. The sign that you're planning to put up, is it similar to what's on page 28? Those are what I've seen before, what the actual speed limit is. And then below shows how fast they're actually going.
Right. So we have a couple of options there. We can, we already have signs pretty close proximity to it. We can condense and put it all on one post, or we can leave it two separate ones and then have a separate speed. So these are going to be solar operated for the most part. They do have the option of hooking up to power later. The other benefit is it does have a Bluetooth capability for us to capture data on, on the roadway too, which they're throwing in. So let's see what that solar panel looks like. That's going to be mounted on the top, but I think we can get it all on one post. Unless, let's, you know, we don't need additional signs out there, so to speak.
I know, I've, some places where I've run across those, you know, they go from 50 to 40. You might miss seeing the first 40 speed limit and all of a sudden showing that you're going 48 and you're not supposed to be.
Right. They're in close proximity. We'll probably just put them both on the same post. That seems to be effective. So it says your speed and there's the speed limit right there. And they will have more of a border around it as you look on the back of that 28 versus on the page in 27 where it just shows the display or sign. It's got more of that white border all the way around it. So it can be magnified a little bit better. And those are 11-inch displays, which is adequate for 40 miles per hour.
In putting that bump out, can that just be added or done at the same time with them doing the work on Norrell? Will that be?
Great question. I don't believe so. There's separate, it sounded like this is a pretty simple construction. And Administrator Johnson did a little bit more work on that.
You know, we reached out to three firms. Bells was the only, Bells Truck, Bells Trucking, or Bells Excavating was the only one responding to. Communicating with Eureka, their staging and their capacity out on Norrell is out of phrases. They're, they're not going to want to be deterred from their, their task, which is a very tight timeline for early October. And they're making great progress, but this is where we.
Well, the reason I ask is there's so much extra traffic on 58th already that is this going to cause more confusion, but.
I think the construction process is very quick. I think a day or two for them to excavate it. The signs are, I checked with, they're seven to 10 days out. So that'd be great if we can get those sooner than later, right? Doesn't, doesn't appear to be a supply issue on those particular signs. So, and then July, I think maybe was the ballpark for.
The city's worked with Bells Excavating on a few projects. And they've always done very good work for us, very quick. So our, our RFP or our quote request asks the work be done by mid-July. So that'll come fast. There'll be a five-day hearing period. There's an, there's an apron there. You have to make sure the curb drains and such. So other more logistics and anything. You have to make sure the curb drains and such, so other more logistics than anything as opposed to.
So is there a motion to approve the traffic speed warning signals and parking area?
So moved.
Second. Councilmember, the vote's already taken, thank you.
When does, when do, when do, when does the public get to have input into issues like this? We can't talk at the beginning of the meeting because this is on the agenda, and now we can't talk because you were looking down when I walked up here, and so now it's been decided. So when, when does the public get to have any input to you people about, about decisions like this?
Well, the vote's already been taken on this, so I'm sorry I didn't have my head up to see that.
The vote's been taken or you asked for a motion?
I asked for the motion in the second.
Okay.
I guess. I'll give you one minute to make a comment, but we need to move on.
Yes, maybe not for most of you, but for somebody who pays taxes here, $13,000 is a lot of money to spend on a parking pad. If you walk or you look, I walk along that route almost every day. The police officer will only be able to see at most a third of 58th. There are other areas. For example, if you look at the parking ramp or the parking entrance across from Boutwell's is an area where the, it's a wide enough driveway where a squad car could easily park, and I'm sure Boutwell's would have no issue or problems with it. The other thing is, like I said, I walk there virtually every day. I have very, very seldom, unless the squad car is going to Boutwell's, seldom is there, is there a squad car patrolling that area. So I'm wondering, besides spending the $13,000 on a parking pad, what other, what other kinds of solutions have been, have been found?
Thank you for your comments. This has been discussed at a couple of different meetings and we have gone with the input from the police chief and our public works department. So there was a motion by Councilmember Doherty and a second by Councilmember Johnson, is that correct? All in favor?
Aye.
Next is the Economic Development Association of Minnesota Conference. I had put this in here, got some more information today, so I'm not going to be going to this particular one, but it sounds like there's going to be some more of these coming up as part of that transition advisory group. So this one I will not be going to, so I'm not going to be asking for that extra registration. Also, the lodging was already totally full, so this was a little bit too far to drive back and forth for a three-day conference. But just to give you a heads up that there will be others coming up. And then also relative, or maybe I'll just wait and have this other, when we get to the other council items and announcements. So we'll move on to approve agreement authorizing bike event for Sunrise Rotary on August 14th, 2022. Eric or Jen?
No, that's, that's mine. I have Rick Hydic here from the Sunrise Organi, Sunrise Rotary Organization, and they again are asking for essentially permission to have their, their event roll through the city. So on August 14th, they've had some good turnouts and they hope their, their, their event continues to be a success. It's if I, I think it's a spread number, it's not all one bulk riders. It's, it's just an event that kind of happens through the course of the day. But as it is part of our policies and procedures is to have an underlying agreement that outlines liabilities and the roles the city has, it's a non-exclusive permit, so to speak. And so Rick is here to, to share any more information and put a smiling face to it. And if I remember, the, the council did, did waive the impact fee as they are a nonprofit organization in the past, if I'm, I'm not mistaken. So if that's something you'd like to consider, that would be, you could do that now or certainly before the end of the year, as it's written in the agreement. So staff has no immediate concerns or problems, or so to speak, and we hope they have a great event and ask for your approval.
Did you want to tell us about your event or did Eric cover that?
Absolutely. So, good evening and thank you, Mayor and City Council members for your consideration. Last year, as Eric mentioned, was our first year for this fundraiser. It's a, it's a bike rally. It's not a race. And so basically, we have all ages, all styles. We have five different routes that, where they can take for different distances, anywhere from 11 miles to up to, we have a 70-mile that goes down to Prescott, a 77 that goes north. Last year, the difference for Oak Park Heights is we had one route, it was a 27-mile route. Last year, we had about 150 riders that went through Browns, Browns Creek Trail and the Gateway Trail down and then looped down through Oak Park Heights. About 150 riders, great time, we had a rest stop in, in Lake Elmo at Green Acres, and then they cross over the river crossing bridge. This year, we modified our 45-mile route that they're going to take basically the same route. And so Oak Park Heights will see an increase in that. And so there was about 120 additional riders on the 45-mile route that will be routing through Oak Park Heights with growth that we're hoping. The, the last year was, first year was a big success. We had 492 riders for first year, which is pretty, pretty good for a first year. We're hoping if we do well, we'll double that this year. And so our estimate, estimated numbers, if we were in that 270 for the two routes for last year, with the growth that we anticipate, we'd be in that 400, 450 riders that would be coming through Oak Park Heights this year. The other thing that we added because of the 45-mile route is we are adding another rest stop in Oak Park Heights at Cobra Park. And we've already had discussions with the department people and everything for reserving that and that's all taken care of. So we really enjoyed, the route is a huge success. We had great weather and so we're hoping for more and we're hoping to continue building this for many years to come.
Well, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I'd make a motion that we approve this and also waive the fees.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Doherty, second by Councilmember Runk. All in favor?
Aye.
Next is scheduled council communication team building meeting. Chuck?
Yeah, well, we talked a little bit about this at our last meeting. And what I'd like to propose is that, that council person, Johnson and myself would be, to go and to kind of interview some, some facilitators and come up with a plan and then work in scheduling that. The council approves that.
I'll make that motion. Second.
I just have one comment. I did turn off the one, if you want this. This is from the one, the facilitator that is at the league, that did our league board, and they do a lot of cities in the city, so, or the states, so. Just another person to add to your list.
All right, sounds good.
Okay, so that was Councilmember Runk, second by Councilmember Ljunggren, or did I mix it up?
Forgot it.
Okay.
Doesn't matter.
All in favor?
Aye.
And there's other council items or announcements. I was contacted by Carla Vida from Deed. She's the facilitator for the Energy Advisory Committee, and she wants to visit all the city, the coal plant cities. So she wants to come out to meet with our council and staff and also with the county and also the staff from the King Plant. So I had mentioned to her, maybe we could have it before our next council meeting, the 24th, and have her come out at five o'clock. She wanted to take a tour of the, the power plant. Well, I can't set that up. And she wants to meet with our staff as, you know, as some of the work goes forward. So if, if that works with the council to have her come out on the 5th and meet with all of us.
So Mayor, that's five o'clock?
Five o'clock.
I won't be at our next meeting, but.
That works.
Okay, I'm sure we'll see more of her, but this is just an initial, more or less like a meet and greet. So is there a motion to set a council work session at five o'clock on the 24th?
So moved.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Ljunggren, second by Councilmember Johnson. All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any other council items or announcements? And we'll be moving into a closed session for potential litigation and city administrative contract, and I'll have you, Kevin, mention that.
Thank you, Mayor. So we're doing two separate and distinct closed sessions tonight, and I'll describe each one. So first is potential litigation matter. The city's been threatened with a legal claim and a potential lawsuit by an individual by the name of James Bowden. It's in relation to his pending purchase at the time of a property in the Palmer Station's development. His desire to felt, to buy that property fell away due to some issues in the city's dealing with that developer and development. And so he's sent a claim notice to the city and we're going to discuss that in closed session. That's permissible under the law, statute 13D point 05, which allows us to go into closed session for the purpose of attorney-client privilege communications about potential or threatened litigation or actual litigation that's going on for the city. And so we're going in closed session under that basis, for that matter. The second issue to be discussed in a closed session tonight is the status of city administrator Eric Johnson's contract and whether that might be extended or renewed beyond its current term. And that session is going to be closed pursuant to statute 13D point 03, which allows us to go into closed session for purposes of discussion or labor negotiations and strategy in that regard. So we will go into closed session on both those items, and I expect the council will likely just adjourn at the end of the closed session and we will summarize the outcome of those at the next council meeting as appropriate.
So do we need a motion to go into closed session?
Yes, please.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Johnson, second by Councilmember Ljunggren. All in favor?
Aye.